...into renewal and replacement account to ensure that our building is well maintained and managed, so that in the future, when we get it back, it is upgraded and well taken care of. And as we have since the beginning, we would remain the landlord. And finally, it would continue to be paid from an existing tourism tax that the 1989 City Council put in place. On the Sun's side, they would pay $80 million plus any cost overruns. So the city is capped at 150. Any overruns would be paid for by the Suns. They would contribute $1 million into the reserve and replacement account to take care of any issues in our building. They would extend their term in the building and remain a tenant until 2037. To date, they have paid the city over the last 27 years just over $30 million in rent. Over the next 15 years, the city in rent would receive approximately $60 million. And the Suns would construct a new practice facility somewhere in the city of Phoenix. And that value is estimated between $25 and $50 million. Why that facility is important are a couple of things that we have. Number one, when the Suns are practicing in the facility, those are days that the building can't be used for paying events. This would allow us the opportunity to program the building for more paying events than we are able to today. Secondly, we do need some expansion of certain areas. When our building was built in 1992, there were no women referees and there was no WNBA. So right now, our women referees and WNBA are sharing a locker room with the Rattlers. So we have both men and women sharing a locker room. And 100% of the operation and maintenance of the building would remain on the Sun's shoulders. So as it has been since the beginning of our operations together, the Suns have paid approximately $300 million to operate our building and the city of Phoenix has paid zero. They take all of that operational risk from the city. And in summary, this is a city-owned building and has been since it was built. It has always been paid for by a tourism tax. It sees, it increases about $182 million in economic impact each and every year. It puts about $13 million into the general fund that this council programs through our budget, approximately $14 million in taxes to the state and county, and it does drive jobs into the community. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Counsel, have any questions at this time? Councilman?
Just one. There's always this misconception of whether or not this money can be used for anything else. I understand the historic reference and all that. Can this money be used for anything around the city of Phoenix? Can it be to, even if we wanted to do an art project in Velda's district or Jim Wearing's district, could we do that?
Mayor, Councilwoman DeCiccio, this money can always be programmed by the City Council. City Council always has jurisdiction over any City Council funds.
Thank you for being direct about that. I really do appreciate that because sometimes people, when they're gearing in a presentation, they try to just give a lot of fluff, but you were very direct. Christine, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Christine, I have a question. I know that the council can redirect the funds. However, my question's going to be more direct. The sports facilities fund, what can that be used for?
Mayor, Councilwoman-
The current fund we're speaking of.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, when the fund was originally created by the City Council in 1989, we went back and read the minutes of what their intention was of creating that fund. And that was to create a revenue source to pay for the debt service, any renovations and any improvements to our city-owned arena. It was to pay for revitalization of downtown and any other entertainment or sports facilities that existed. So there is debt service that's already pledged against that sports facilities fund today for other projects throughout the city of Phoenix.
And what's currently being used out of the sports facility fund?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, for exact information, I'll turn that out to our CFO, Denise Olson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. So right now, we're using the sports facilities fund for several different things. Number one, we've got to repay the bonds associated with the arena. We'll make that last payment at the end of this year. We also have bonds related to some projects in the downtown area, including Cricket Pavilion, land north of Fillmore, and some other things like that in the downtown area. Those bonds run through way into the future, so all the way till 2037. So we'll be paying those bonds for a while. We also have some just general operating expenses downtown that are associated with the arena. That's upwards of about $30 million a year. And then we also have, let's see, that's Maryville, yes. We also have Mary, well, we have two more things. We have Maryville improvements, which is $2 million a year, and we also have the remains of a hotel loan that we need to pay off.
Don't we have a biomedical campus?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, we do have a biomedical campus, although those revenues are coming in to offset the debt service.
Correct, but it's programmed with sports facility fund.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to talk a little bit about the obsolescence clause. So my understanding is if the Suns call for obsolescence in July 2019, then arbitrators come in and they determine how much we have to pay to make sure it's not obsolescence. So does that include just infrastructure, the basic bones, or would it actually include others that might then make it more expensive than the 150 million that's proposed right now?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, as I said during my presentation, the lease that was negotiated is very prescriptive. There's no room to negotiate what is called for in the obsolescence clause. On July 1st, should our anchor tenant, the Suns, call for obsolescence, we go through a very prescriptive process of bringing in those arbitrators. They look at our building, they look at it from an economic competitiveness, a physical competitiveness, and an infrastructure competitiveness. They then come back with their list of what was required to bring the facility into both an economic and a physical competitiveness standpoint. At that point, it would come forward to the City Council for your review and consideration. So it could be more than the 150. It wouldn't be limited to the infrastructure that we're looking at today. It would be, it would look at the whole entire building and would be 100% on the city at that time.
So just following that, so if it comes back to us and we vote, we could say, no, we don't want to pay it, and then the Suns can walk in 2022?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, you are correct, 2022.
Okay. And then, we would then be on the dime perhaps to a demolition, or we just let it sit and look like what we see on McDowell Road today?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, it is a city-owned facility, so a determination for what to do with that building would need to be made by the City Council in 2022, should our anchor tenant choose not to be in the building any longer.
Chris, if the Suns leave, what happens to our downtown and what impact does they have on our budget?
Mayor, Councilwoman Mendoza, our downtown is moving in the right direction. If we look back to, I really date myself when I say I used to work here in 1986 in a, in a building on Central Avenue, and there was a Jack-in-the-Box where City Hall sits today, and that's where I used to go to lunch back in 1986. The arena and other components have been key to what's revitalized downtown. When you look at destination, when you look at things that are seen because of the arena and investments that are made because of other things, it's, I don't want to overstate that it's only the arena, but you look at other things that have happened in downtown, the arena's been key in those items that have happened in downtown. So you look at media impressions, and what I mean by media impressions are, when the Suns have a home game, they will, the national press will pan back outside of the arena and they show a very lit up, very vibrant skyline. And those are 41 million people that I can't get in front of to tell the Phoenix story. You know, I hate to say it, but often, they still think of Phoenix as Cowboys and Cactus. And this tells decision-makers, it tells people who are looking for new locations for businesses, that we have a very vibrant and alive downtown. So that arena and other things are very important to what we see today, which is about $2.3 billion of private sector investment that's either under construction in downtown at this moment, or is in permitting and planning phases getting ready to break ground. We see about $12.8 million in revenues and taxes coming out of that building each year. And I would argue that that revenue is dependent in great part on that building.
Mayor?
Councilman Noakowski?
I would like to hear from the, from the cards now, if possible, and then maybe afterwards we can have comments, yeah.
No, I, I think we're about to the end of the question. Jason Rowley, you have people dedicated, so you have six minutes. You can sit there or you can go over here to the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm Jason Rowley, President and CEO of the Phoenix Suns. I wanted to thank everybody here today, particularly the City Council, the mayor, and the city staff for all the hard work that's gone into this process. It's been, it's been a long time. It's been a couple of years that we've been working on this. And to see the effort that's been put forth to get to this point today is something that gives me a sense of pride in our city, certainly a sense of pride in our organization, but I just wanted to thank you for that. Certainly also wanted to thank Councilman Noakowski for his leadership in setting up those five public meetings. It was very critical for us, the Suns, and for the City Council and for the staff to really hear from the constituents, to understand what they were thinking, to educate the public about what this building means to the city, educate ourselves about what they were thinking, be able to answer questions and get that kind of feedback. What I was really happy to see was that the level of discourse there was not this kind of vitriolic, angry discussion, it was really something that was much more positive, something where I think most people walked away with, with a better feeling of understanding about where we're heading on this. So wanted to thank Councilman Noakowski for that leadership. You know, we are very proud of this 30-year partnership that we've had with the city of Phoenix, and we believe it has set a standard for private-public partnerships. The citizens of Phoenix, the city, and the Suns have mutually benefited from this relationship. And I'm very excited to be standing here, hopeful that we're able to continue this journey together going into the future. I've said this many times in my 12 years with the organization, it seems like it's gone by pretty quickly, but the fact is, the Phoenix Suns are a community asset. We talk internally about our family, and that family includes the citizens of Phoenix because that's what we're really talking about here, and that's what's really critical. What's the best thing for the citizens of Phoenix? It's why we host over 200 community events at Talking Stick Resort Arena at either almost no cost or minimal cost to organizations that utilize it. And these are organizations like Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA. There's actually more basketball played, there's more youth basketball played in Talking Stick Resort Arena than there is professional basketball. So being able to give back to the community in those ways is something that really demonstrates how this building is truly a community asset. It's not a Suns building, it's a, it's a building that is owned by the city but is utilized by the citizens, citizens of the city. It's also very critical to us that we are a, an organization that gives back to the community. This is not something that's in the deal, it's not anything that's ever been part of our original agreement with, with the city of Phoenix under our operating agreement. But the simple fact is, over the last 26 years, our organization has given away almost $40 million to Phoenix and Valley charities. On top of that, we have given away thousands and thousands of man-hours, hundreds of thousands of tickets. These are things that we do because we know it's the right thing to do. And what's critical to know is that going forward, those investments are going to continue, not because we have an obligation to under any contract, but because we feel we have an obligation to do that as part of the Phoenix community and part of being good stewards of the Valley. Those dollars will continue. It's why we name, have the name Phoenix on our chest. We're the only team who has Phoenix on our chest. And because of that, when 100, when 1.5 billion people across the world are watching NBA basketball, we're demonstrating our civic pride for this city. It's also why, in difficult times, we wear our Los Suns jersey to demonstrate our commitment to the Hispanic heritage that lives and breathes in this community. It's why we do those things. In 1989, the leadership of this city and the Phoenix Suns had a mutual vision of what downtown Phoenix could mean. 30 years later, that vision has come to life. All you have to do is get in your car or go for a walk and see what this downtown has become. We are proud to have been a catalyst of that. We take tremendous pride in being the anchor tenant in downtown Phoenix and the growth that has resulted in that. As Chris was talking about, the hundreds of millions of dollars in economic impact, the tax revenue that goes to pay for critical items like police, fire, streets, those are all things that this building, your building contributes to. So it's something we're very proud of, and jobs, obviously, the jobs that the arena provides, but also the jobs that are created by the businesses that we continue to support. In addition, and I think this is a critical point, this city generates revenue from others that come here to visit. Everybody knows about the tourism tax, we talked about that, but an interesting fact is that 70% of the tickets we sell in our building are actually sold to individuals who live outside of the city of Phoenix. So the idea that if the team wasn't there, that you, that those dollars would just get repurposed somewhere else in the city of Phoenix, that's not really accurate. 70% of what we sell is sold to people who live outside of the city of Phoenix, and I think that's a very important point. We play a critical role in the vibrancy that we see in downtown Phoenix, and there's so much more potential, and we know that. I think we can all agree that Phoenix has become a world-class destination, but the fact is, a world-class city needs to have world-class amenities. This renovation will allow us to retain and grow our profile as that type of a city. When you start looking at major events that have happened here, none of those would happen without the vibrancy we have in downtown Phoenix, and an arena is critical to that, those types of activities coming to Phoenix. We believe in this partnership, we believe in this community, and we believe without a question that this agreement is in the best interests of our citizens. It is something that when you look at the structure of the deal, when you look at the fact that it generates dollars and generates revenue, we know that this is a good deal for the citizens of Phoenix. Before I close, I know I've gone a little bit over time here, I did want to recognize and share our appreciation for all the people who have come here to speak on our behalf today, and all the people in the various sectors across the community who have come out in our support, the business community, the nonprofit community, our fans, our six-man members, the people who come to our building. That is what we live in, that's what we live and breathe every day. The people who work in that building, we spend more time there than we do with our own families at home, so they really are, we are a family there. And it's, it's critical for us that we continue to be placed in a position where we can be successful for the city, for our constituents, and for our Suns family. So I want to thank everybody for that. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for the great work on this. Again, thank the city staff, and just really hope that we're in a position where we can move forward with this, with this terrific 30-year partnership and move into the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we are, I'm, myself and managing partner, Robert Saver, more than happy to take any questions at this point or throughout the process here.
Thank you.
Just a comment.
Comment?
Yeah, Jason, too. You don't have to stay up there if you're not. We may not agree on the deal, but one of the things that we do agree on is that you've been a fantastic partner for the city of Phoenix, you've been great for the downtown. The fact that the arena was built at the time that it was built was a challenge that many took, not, very few took, not very many would be willing to take on the city of Phoenix. So we do appreciate the long-term 30-year relationship. It's been a fantastic relationship. None of us want to see you leave. I don't want to see you leave. I'd love to find a way to make it work. Appears you have the votes all set, you're done, but after this is what happens afterwards. And I, you know, you'll find it on my end, you'll find me to be very accommodating, I want to work with you, I want to make sure you're successful in the downtown. Your success will matter to the downtown area, but it also matters to the entire city of Phoenix. Having a, and he's right, there are intrinsic values that are not part of this deal here, values that it's hard to assess. When you see the word Phoenix across someone's chest, they're playing a game across the country, around the world. It's an important part of our community, but it's also important for us as the fifth-largest city in the city, in the country. So I do want to thank you for that. Again, we, we're not going to agree on this today, but at the end of the day, I look forward to working with you, I look forward to your relationship with the city of Phoenix, not just from my end, but for the fact that it's a benefit to everybody in the room and everybody in the, in the city of Phoenix. Thanks.
Thank you. Don Brandt, and then Todd Sanders, following him.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of this council. My name's Don Brandt, and I serve as Chairman of the Board of Greater Phoenix Leadership and Downtown Phoenix Incorporated, as well as Chairman and CEO of Arizona Public Service Company. I speak today on behalf of the 300 businesses that are members of DPI and its subsidiaries, the Phoenix Community Alliance, and the Downtown Phoenix Partnership, the 110 businesses that are represented by GPL, and the 6,300 men and women of APS. I spent my first 48 years in St. Louis, and we relocated to Phoenix 16 years ago. I'm familiar with the consequences of a poorly maintained sports facility. In 1995, as they call it now, the Dome opened in downtown St. Louis to be home of the St. Louis Rams NFL franchise that was relocating from Los Angeles. Over the next 20 years, the Dome received minimal updates and maintenance. Just a few years ago, Time Magazine rated it as the seventh worst major sports facility of any kind in all of America. Two years ago, the Rams exercised their equivalent of an obsolescence clause and relocated to Los Angeles. Last summer, I was in St. Louis and toured the area around the Dome. I can best describe the area as blighted with woods and, with weeds overgrown and many restaurants and businesses shuttered. They had just one concert there in 2018. And the lesson from St. Louis is this, I believe, professional sports are one of the elements of the community mix that distinguish one city from another, much more than population alone. Hometown pro sports franchises help us project an image of attractiveness and vibrancy, and the facilities they play in matter for a lot of reasons. The first is obviously for the home team fans, but these places also draw bowls, tournaments, concerts, All-Star Games, and all of which bring in millions into our economy, and not only boost the bottom line, but create jobs and establish municipal legitimacy, as I'll call it. These events are extremely important to a thriving business community. It took Phoenix a while to earn its legitimacy as a big city. The Suns and the city's arena played a role in that evolution, and this is our chance to sustain and build on that legitimacy. I ask you to vote in favor for this proposal, and thank you for your time and attention today.
Thank you. Todd Sanders, with Glenn Hammer, following Todd.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. Todd Sanders, President and CEO of the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce, here in support of the proposed arena renovation. And speaking first about the Suns, because certainly a lot has been said about the Suns, this organization has not only created new jobs for Greater Phoenix, but has created four additional new businesses of its own while growing the workforce substantially. More important, they play a leading role in convincing other sports organizations that we are, in fact, a viable sports hub on a national level, and we've seen certainly the fruits of that effort in the last few years. This year, the Suns also won the Chamber's Economic Driver Award for our impact awards, which shows their impact not only to our region, state, and city. In terms of the arena, key in helping ignite the resurgence of the downtown center was the decision by the city and the city of Phoenix to build the Talking Stick Resort, which also, of course, we also remember as the America West Arena. I had a lot more hair a long time ago, so it's certainly been a long time. But during that time, the Suns have consistently maintained and updated that building for this 26-year life, renovating Talking Stick Resort Arena as a critical step in further fueling Phoenix's downtown revitalization. And I think it's important to say that we're going to do this using existing funding mechanisms and not a new, a new tax. The Suns have invested more than $150 million in improvements and paid for all these expenses to operate the building for more than 25 years. The arena and the team contribute to more than $160 million in annual tax revenues that benefit the city, the county, and the state, and that certainly is the economic development engine that we need to continue to have here in Phoenix. As some of us were in the topping-off ceremony yesterday for the, for a new, beautiful building overlooking the arena, part of the discussion was that would not be possible without the seed that really built all this, which was the arena. So I'm here in support of the proposal and ask you to also support the proposal to keep Phoenix thriving. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn, followed by Bruce Reynolds.
Thank you, Mayor Williams, and members of the Phoenix City Council. My name is Glenn Hammer, I'm President and CEO of the Arizona Chamber of Commerce and Industry. Our chamber strongly supports the downtown arena modernization project before you today. We believe strongly that the terms presented deliver a good deal for taxpayers. This is a city-owned facility. Regardless of who the tenants of the building are at any given time, we believe that the facility should be brought up to the standards befitting a world-class city with a vibrant downtown core. And I would argue that this is the crown jewel of this vibrant downtown core. What's great about this deal is that the cost-sharing agreement between the Phoenix Suns, a tenant, and the city, the landlord, is, is, is cost-shared. And what's better is that they're, as discussed before, there are no new taxes for any of these renovations. And the whole valley wins with a top-notch downtown arena, $182 million in economic impact each year, and it's about $335 million when you consider indirect impacts. And remember, this isn't just basketball. The 41 regular-season Sun home games represent just about a third of the arena activities. My girls have been to it many times for different Girl Scout-type things, and it's just, again, just a jewel in this city. In addition to the Suns, there's the Mercury, the Rattlers, and dozens of dates filled by national touring acts, major headliners, that one would expect to visit world-class cities like Phoenix, and we want to keep them coming. The arena is absolutely central to the city and the state's best-in-class tourism offerings. And if you want to talk about an export industry selling the state, then you're, you're talking tourism and you're talking about the Suns. A review of the state's tourism numbers tells the good news. In 2018, we had a record-breaking year in, in all the important categories, like airport, passenger volumes, lodging occupancy, you name it, and the Suns played an important role in this. The facilities like the Suns are part of this story, and they tell the story around the globe. I had the good fortune of being part of the contingent that traveled to Mexico City, and I'll tell you, you have, there's a lot of fans of the city of Phoenix because of what the Suns provide. They are an international brand, and the arena is a big part of this. To conclude, again, it's an export industry, it's, it's a critical component of our state's tourism economy. It's a good deal. The landlord and the building's major tenant have arrived at, we believe, is a fair and good agreement. The arena clearly needs to be updated. It's great for our economy, and the Arizona Chamber of Commerce and Industry respectfully requests that you approve the modernization. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Reynolds, and then Chris Nichol.
Welcome, Mayor, City Councilman. I oppose this decision to put the money towards the arena. I have a question to ask each and every one of you. Why can't you just put a surcharge on the tickets? We all know that sports arenas are very multimillion, multimillion-dollar businesses. Again, there's no reason why it shouldn't self, fill itself. I don't see why we should have to put any tax dollars into this at all. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris? Followed by Todd Vigil?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. My name's Chris Nichol, and I'm here in support of the renovation of the arena. I'm a Phoenix resident living in District 6 and a huge Suns fan. I've watched the Suns and the arena helps for our downtown development, and it's become a very vibrant downtown. Losing the Suns and many year-round events hosted at the arena would be a huge hit to our city's image and to our downtown. I work for a national general contractor and can attest, just like Mr. Brandt said earlier, the desirability of companies and employees to be a part of a city with professional sports teams and venues that host concerts and big family events. Attracting and retaining employees for us is already difficult these days with the construction workforce shortage, and losing to many like this would be a hit for our business and discouraging to our 300-plus employees that call the city of Phoenix home. Also, economically speaking, as you heard earlier, the renovation doesn't include a new tax, it's paid by the tourism tax. And keeping the Suns and all the events hosted at the arena generates more than $12 million that you've already heard into the Sydney's general fund, not to mention the enormous impact to the surrounding businesses. This is the right kind of investment for our city, and I encourage you to vote in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd? And then Michael Pierce, following him.
Mayor Williams, esteemed council. I stand here today wearing two hats. First of all, I'm a second-generation Phoenician and lifelong Valley resident. I'm Todd Vigil, and I normally am on the conservative side when it comes to fiscal matters. I believe government should only be as large as it can afford for its constituents. That said, I believe that government, as it has throughout history, must strategically invest in the infrastructure needed to make sure our community has the assets required to thrive economically. I believe reasonable fiscal support for stadiums, arenas, parks, and of course, the arts are a critical part of our cultural economy. While the basketball- While the basketball team may not deliver on the court every year or in recent history, I can tell you that the arena and the Phoenix Suns organization deliver for this community every day and every year. Aside from the well-documented economic impact, thank you, Christina, the Phoenix Suns and the arena are a critical part of this community. As the head of marketing for the Phoenix Symphony, I can personally attest that the Phoenix Suns, their leadership, and Phoenix Suns charities have been steadfast partners of the Symphony's community and education programs for nearly 30 years. Since 1991, the Phoenix Suns organization has been a significant supporter of the Symphony's education programs, focused on bringing the joy of live music to our children, in particular, the underserved youth throughout all of Phoenix and central Arizona. I will defer to you, council, to make the right decision for Phoenix, but I respectfully ask that you take these comments into consideration as you evaluate your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Pierce, followed by Brian Madden.
Well, again, I find myself in opposition to what I find utopian talk. The idea that we have a vibrant downtown of glass towers and these... I see signs that say, "Invest in downtown." I guess I'm old-fashioned. I say, "Invest in Phoenix." Phoenix is more than just downtown. It's neighborhoods, and there are neighborhoods and pockets of despair here. Now, we've got to get serious. Either we have a consumer economy that consumes but doesn't produce, or we have a healthy economy that is a mixture of that. Now, I learned in biology that there are parasitical relationships and symbiotic relationships. In an economic parasitical relationship, we consume and consume but do not produce, and that leads, in biology, to death of the host and the one who's feeding off it. A symbiotic economic relationship realizes that businesses' growth, economic growth, are important, but the distribution is very important, too. Other than that, we're going to have a tale of two cities, one destitute with hopelessness and one city filled with gleaming people who are happy because the system has been good to them. And I work with people who are hopeless. I spend volunteer time at Andre House. In the midst of power politics and wealth, we have a shame in our city.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Brian Madden. I am the Chief Executive Officer and President of the Valley of the Sun YMCA. Our YMCA has been in Phoenix for over 127 years, longer than Arizona's been a state. And during that time, our responsibilities are to build a better community. We do that every day. One of the programs I'm most proud of is our youth sports program. Our youth sports program participation, I know that you know this, but it increases
Thank you, Mayor Williams and City Council. When Chris Mackey said "before time," I guess I'm before time. I was on the City Council that brought about the arena, along with the Phoenix Suns at that time. And when we did this, it was not done lightly. It was a frightening thing to do because you had to talk about taxes, you had to talk about the needs of the citizens, but we felt we needed to jumpstart downtown. We had done an awful lot during the '80s to make sure that downtown started to come back. And when we passed the tourism tax and said, "This tax will be used by the citizens of Phoenix, for the citizens of Phoenix, to keep the arena alive, to pay for it, and in the year 2022, make sure that we can fix it if it needs renovations." And we are almost at the year 2022. So I ask you to keep the promise of the council that voted on this and renovate this building with this tax. It's needed. The Suns are an active participant. And the other thing I'd like to bring up, because I had two items. The one is just remembering the past history. And when you make decisions, you hope councils of the future will keep your commitment to the people of the city of Phoenix. Downtown has really grown for it. But the other thing I wanted to bring up in the short time I have is the Phoenix Suns have been tremendous partners for the downtown area and the nonprofits throughout the city. You've heard that. You've heard stats thrown out, $40 million. But the real story is my husband and I are in a public-private partnership with Grant Park, and Grant Park is at Second Avenue and Grant, almost a stone's throw from the Sun Arena. And we could not have survived without the Suns. They've helped us fix our courts. They've come down. Mark West has come to our late-night basketball programs. And they're a symbol and example to the youth in the community that we are part of the thriving community. It's a very poor area. It is part of downtown, and many times gets ignored, but the Phoenix Suns have not ignored us. They are partners, as the YMCA director said, and they are good corporate citizens, but more importantly, they are part of the Phoenix fabric. And if you don't renovate this arena and they leave Phoenix, then, you know, I just have to say that the citizens will not keep the promise that we voted in so long ago, will not actualize that promise. And I want this arena to move forward because I want my grandsons and my great-grandsons, because I have one now and four great-granddaughters, I want them to know that there's pride at the city, and the city will move forward. And even if it's risky, you take that risk as elected official, and the city of Phoenix can be proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your service. Following Richard is Damian Sarafina.
This is a very difficult situation for every one of you. It's also very difficult for the entire city of Phoenix. First thing I'd like to say is I appreciate how much effort the city staff have put into this, how hard they worked, and I also would like to compliment the Suns on finally getting a PR program on TV, which I saw again and again and again, which was actually extremely well-done. Now, having said all that, there are three or four things that I think you all have been inundated by things that people have said. The first thing is, I don't want to see the Suns go away. I don't. And I'm really disappointed that Fenimore Craig was so darn good in 1989 to put in clauses that protected them. But now, we are in a situation where they're supposedly exercising that clause. The worst thing that could come under that would be that they would leave, although I don't believe that that's really in their best interest. And what I would really like to see is this be stopped right here and taking the hard effort that the people from the city of Phoenix staff have put into it, come back and say, "All right, this isn't really going to where we want it to go. We'd like to renegotiate it, and we'd like to make it fair for the citizens of Phoenix as well as for the Suns." Suns make a tremendous amount of money on being a team that plays. The city of Phoenix makes a minimal amount directly. I'm not arguing the multiplier effect on economics. Everybody understands that. But the whole thing is, there is a way that this could be renegotiated and done in a way that would satisfy, make the Suns whole, would not require that they come in and try to find a new place to play, which would necessitate probably a $200 million or $300 million investment in a new stadium, but would enable them to stay here where they have a status and where everybody appreciates what they've done, and it will continue. We all love the Suns. We just want to do it so it's fair to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I would like to share just another story. We heard about $40 million that Suns charities have put back into the community. I'm with one of those charities, Helping Hands for Single Moms, and we help low-income single moms go to college. These ladies are working part-time, going to college full-time, and raising their kids. This is a difficult, very strenuous time on their family. And over the past 10 years, the Phoenix Suns have come alongside with us and just been a tremendous partner to help these women through at least $1,000 tickets, $100,000 in support, events at the arena where they give out Thanksgiving dinners or Mother's Day events, and every time, the staff has been so kind and gentle, encouraging to these women. Now, what do we get for that investment of $100,000 by the Phoenix Suns? During the 10 years, 230 of our single moms have graduated from college and are now out working in the community, most in Phoenix. 150 of them are nurses, and they are filling your hospitals and care homes in the area of Phoenix, doing good work, committing great skills to the society. We're just one of the nonprofits out of the hundreds that they help every year. Try to get your head around that, the impact on this community. And earlier, we prayed that we would recognize the welfare and the true needs of the city. Well, I would say the Suns are focused on the true needs of the city, and they are pouring money into nonprofits to help at-risk children and at-risk families, and helping them move out of poverty, helping them to exist in poverty. I hope you'll consider that as a part of the bottom line and will vote yes to keep the Phoenix Suns here. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Nauman and Steve Zabinski?
If you go ahead and pass this, you are crossing a line and carrying out the equivalent of an act of violence against the public. On August 13, 1997, I walked into the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors auditorium and shot Mary Rose Wilcox over the baseball stadium tax matter. You must let the public vote on this matter. If you go ahead and pass it, you're crossing a line, and it's equivalent to a bloody act of violence against the public. A couple hours after I shot her, I held a press conference, and here's the exact quote of the statement I made. I said I shot Wilcox to try to put a stop to the political dictatorship of Jerry Colangelo, the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors, and Arizona State legislature in passing the baseball stadium tax, and to try to force them to demolish the Bank One Ballpark so they'll restore the vote of the people is the bottom line, and restore the public's faith in their democratic election system, and to restore democracy in Maricopa County. You must let the public vote on this matter. If you don't, you're crossing a line and carrying out the equivalent of a bloody act of violence against the public. A couple hours after that press conference, I made this statement. I said, "I'm very seriously worried I'm going to be assaulted and murdered in this jail by Jerry Colangelo, Arizona's political leaders." They slammed me in a mental hospital and psychiatric ward for a few days and told me how sick I was for making that statement. Eight months later, after my trial but before my sentence, they installed an inmate in my living pod area. He came into my cell, hit me in the back of the head, knocked me out cold, and slammed my head on a table repeatedly. I had to undergo major surgery. My jaw was fractured and wired for months, and they had to put a bunch of metal plates in my head. The public must be allowed to vote on this matter. If you go ahead and pass it, you're crossing a line, and it's equivalent to an act of violence against the public.
Thank you. Steve, with Art Hamilton, following.
Mayor, I just want to apologize to Mary Rose for that you have to listen to this. It's not right, and I just feel really bad for you, Mary Rose, that you had to go through that and that you did what you thought was right. And we, as elected officials, have to vote on tough issues, and we shouldn't be threatened by our lives or being shot at neither. So, thank you, Mary Rose.
Mayor Williams, members of the City Council. I'm Steve Zabinski, the Executive Director of St. Vincent de Paul. I'm here today speaking as a private citizen. The Phoenix Suns have been involved with St. Vincent de Paul long before I arrived there 22 years ago. In fact, I remember in 1997 when Danny Ainge called, and he wanted to bring the entire Suns team down to volunteer with us. Cotton Fitzsimmons was one of the instructors at our Leadership Academy. Jerry Colangelo would regularly speak to our homeless guests. We have pictures of Danny Manning and Rex Chapman, Connie Hawkins, all serving food in our dining room. If you fast-forward to more recent years, Mr. and Mrs. Sarver are regular volunteers in our dining room. They even invited me to dinner one night to learn more about St. Vincent de Paul. Jason Rowley and Maria Byer are regular volunteers. They invited me down to the Suns Arena to speak about the importance of charitable giving. Lon Bobby taught me about data analytics, and he even introduced me to the data analytics team at the Phoenix Suns. Al McCoy, when you listen to him on the radio, you'll hear him say, "Feed, clothe, house, and heal." That's what St. Vincent de Paul does. Tim Kempton, Tom Chambers, Eddie Johnson, Alvin Adams, they're all regular volunteers with us in our dining rooms. But our favorite son, the absolute favorite son, is the gorilla. He's simply beloved when he comes to the family dining room. For 25 years, the Suns and Suns charities have financially supported St. Vincent de Paul and many other worthy charities. In 2016, we received the Suns Playmaker Award. It was a $100,000 grant for our dental clinic, which serves people all throughout Greater Phoenix. My personal favorite Suns story, though, takes place on November 26, 2015. That was Thanksgiving, and I went down to our dining room that evening, and there was Devin Booker. 19-year-old Devin Booker volunteering, serving people in our dining room. I'll close by simply saying that the Phoenix Suns are a really fine organization, and we are blessed, blessed, to have them in our community. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, members of the council. Happy to be on this end of this side of the dais and not yours. I wanted to come and simply suggest to you that I am pleased to have this opportunity to speak to you because I was, as a native Sun here, long before any of this was here. I was here when we had that madhouse on McDowell and helped fund some of the programs to improve it, to keep the Suns here, to bridge us to the point to where the city would step up, as it did, and provide that magnificent arena. I'm here to support what you all, I hope, will do, not just because of the Suns, but because of the city. While they may play there, that asset belongs to me as well as all the other citizens and residents of this community. I believe it serves us all well. I love to go watch basketball, but more importantly, I love the kind of growth that you all have helped bring to this city. And I believe that arena became, and it still remains, the anchor for that growth. I think it is a forward-looking thing that you are considering to do. I believe we will all be enriched to buy it, should that vote be positive, and I think we will all be proud that we, in fact, still have that asset, and we still have the Suns. we will all be proud that we, in fact, still have that asset, and we still have the Suns. And yes, above all else, we still have the Gorilla.
Thank you. Juliana?
Good afternoon. My name is Boaz Whitbeck. City Councilor and City of Phoenix resident, I'm a Phoenix resident, and I serve as the Deputy State Director for the Arizona Chapter of Americans for Prosperity, a grassroots organization committed to advancing policies that improve the lives of all Arizonans. And our nearly 90,000 activists strongly encourage the Phoenix City Council to reject the $150 million of taxpayer funds to the Suns to renovate the Talking Stick Arena. This proposal is a perfect example of corporate welfare and government picking winners and losers in the marketplace, which is simply not its role. Not only is this an inappropriate way to utilize funds from taxes, studies have shown that there's no proof that investing in these stadiums stimulate local economies. In fact, economists have also concluded that propping up local stadiums, arenas, may hurt local businesses. People spending money to go to games might have less to spend on the theater, or they may be deterred to go out to eat if there's a lot of traffic. There are many people here, I think, in the audience, and hopefully you too, who would care about the mom-and-pop businesses that may not benefit at all from this proposal. Another consideration that the council needs to consider is, when will the buck stop for the Phoenix Suns and those who use the arena? There's already been millions of dollars to spend to renovate this arena once before, and are council members really willing to keep Phoenix taxpayers on the hook for years to come when it comes to that revenue stream that could be used for other things, such as what we talked about earlier, water infrastructure, our streets, first responders? It can be used for many different things. Our activists are dedicated to educating fellow Arizonans to opposing bad policies such as these, and we urge you to reject this example of corporate welfare and find private sector alternatives, as many other cities have, without using taxpayer funds. It's time to cut the purse strings and let the Suns rely on their own revenue streams to fund arena renovations. Simply put, this is a bad deal for the City of Phoenix. So, thank you for this opportunity, council members, and we urge you to reject this proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Ebert will follow Neil.
Mayor, council, thank you for the honor to speak here today. My name's Neil Juliana, the President and CEO of Greater Phoenix Leadership. The organization is in very strong support of the deal that is in front of you today. You've already heard some of the reasons from our board chair and from some of the other leading leaders of the business community organization. So, let me just tell you a little story in the time that I have. 20-some years ago, when I went to mayor school for the community to the east of here, I learned how to look at the evaluation of complex public-private partnerships, not unlike the one that you're looking at today. And there's really three areas that I learned were very important to evaluate: the public capacity, the public value, and the public support. I think we've heard today from staff and from other speakers that the public capacity has been very well-aligned for this project from the very beginning. Thoughtful people on council and in staff, when this first deal first came up, thought about that and thought about the learned term, and the public capacity has been very well-planned for us. So, check that box. The public value, it's also been very well-spoken today about the intense public value of the arena for the downtown, for the overall community, for the jobs, for the tax base, so on and so on. You can check that box. Now, public support. If anyone can come forward with any kind of complex public-private partnership that has 100% public support, boy, I would love that. And in 14 years as an elected official, I don't think I ever saw it. But you have overwhelming public support for what is happening in downtown Phoenix, for the partnership that you have with your main tenant, the Phoenix Suns, for all of the other ancillary events that take place within the arena, and for the impact that it has, not just on downtown, but I would contend even outside of Phoenix, for the Greater Phoenix region. It's important for a thriving, vibrant downtown community. So, in my view, from the public capacity, public value, and public support, you can check all three boxes as elected officials doing a very serious evaluation, and I hope you will support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike? And then Mike Dwyer.
Mayor Williams and council members, thank you for this time today. Please allow me just one minute to share a story, perhaps the untold story, of Robert Sarver and his impact on Cityscape and downtown. We all remember the time, spring 2009. We're at the peak of the Great Recession. We at Cityscape just lost our anchor tenant, Wacoia Bank, and things are a little dark. I don't know Robert at the time, but I have enough courage to call him. And we quickly headed off, made a deal, and Alliance Bank moved their headquarters to downtown Phoenix and to Cityscape. They started with 100 employees. Today, they have over 800 employees. Over the last several years, they've loaned over $1 billion, the bank has, to Phoenix-based companies, including ours. They financed Patriots Park and the renovation and the retail at Block 77 downtown, when not a single other lender would. There's many things I'd like to say about Robert that have not been broadcast, but it's one of the things I value most about him, is he hasn't done this. Four years ago, when we began planning Block 23, we really wanted Fry's Food Stores. They were number one on our draft board, using a basketball term. So, I asked Robert to join me based upon the relationship and the partnership that the Suns had enjoyed with Fry's over many years. The pitch went very well with Fry's. As many of you would know, Fry's opens later this calendar year. So, again, using a basketball metaphor, Robert has earned several assists downtown that he has not gotten any credit for. I also want to acknowledge the hard work that City Manager Ed Zirker and City Management has done over the many years related to this agreement. And one part that has not been discussed today that I think is critical is the additional five years that Ed and City Management were able to negotiate. It extends the lease all the way to 2037. I'm not getting any younger, but I can say I definitely do not want to go through this process again. So, thank you, Ed, and Mayor and Council. We hope that you all support the decision today. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Mike will be Bo Larson.
Thank you for letting me speak. You've had two years, I have two minutes. We'll see how we can do. You know, what's interesting is we've turned this into an emotional debate about if the Suns should be here, but really, this is a business decision. That's where it should be. Should the city be involved in having an arena? Here's the reality. We make about $3.5 million annually off that arena in direct revenue. The $12.8 million, eh, that's a little sketchy. Studies nationally have shown that really doesn't come to fruition. What that is, is an attempt to say everything that's sold downtown during an event night, dinners, everything else can be directly attributed to the arena. Not true. Again, look at any national study. It's been done by economists all over. It doesn't come. So, what we know is we have $3.5 million of direct revenue. Now, we're going to take out $150 million alone on this, and I believe because of interest, we'll probably be paying $13 million annually on it. So, we have a building that gives us $3.5, and we're paying $13. Not a good start. But the argument is, we'll use the tourism fund to spend it. For some reason, people believe this isn't their money. This is just like my grandparents sent me money for graduation. I didn't earn it, but it's my money. It has value. I can do something with it. So, what we have is, we have, I think, if you look at it, the tourism fund is making about $19 million average. Hopefully, it'll go up to $20 million a year. That's a direct revenue source the City Council can legally use for any lawful purpose. I've read the papers that define what the fund is. Versus a potential trickle-down tax revenue that goes through, it's even had a slide that goes through this long economic cycle, that we may realize some money, but we may not. There's recessions, there's other things that happen. So, ultimately, from a business standpoint, this really isn't the best deal. We need to divest ourselves completely from it and let, basically, economics take over. And I'll tell you, three acres downtown in the fifth-largest city in the nation, in one of the states that's growing fastest in the country, probably isn't going to last on. Look at the biomedical campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Bo, followed by Gary Fuch.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Bo Larson. I work for an organization called the Civitan Foundation, and I am also a citizen of the great city of Phoenix. The Civitan Foundation works with children and adults with developmental disabilities. We provide job skill training, employment, and life enrichment programs. The Phoenix Suns recently provided us a grant to help us expand our free and reduced lunch program during the summer. We serve over 14,000 meals to children in seven locations in Phoenix. And it's also providing job employment opportunities for some of our members that work in our kitchen that create these meals. And through the support of organizations like the Phoenix Suns and the Phoenix Suns charities, we're able to expand this program and reach even more children through this. Now, as a citizen of Phoenix, I have lived here since 1988, and I've been a huge Phoenix Suns fan ever since. And that's one of the main reasons I come downtown. I live in District 3 and in Moon Valley, and I come downtown to see the Suns and the Diamondbacks. It's part of our being a resident of this community that we encourage you to continue on with the support of the Phoenix Suns and help them expand and grow, because they are going to have a national championship, and I'm looking forward to being there when that happens. And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary is next. Gary F U C eight, okay. I'm careful.
Well, I've been announced wrong many times, though. Well, I'd like to say I'm as gallant as the rest of these folks, but I don't speak that way, so I'm sorry in advance. Thank you for listening. I can't believe you are even considering giving this billionaire this money, and you are kidding no one. It is for him and him alone, when there are so many other needs for this money. You have vets that are dying because their hospital cannot get money to service them. You also have teachers that are so underpaid, it is not even funny. You have children who are our future, who have books that are older than all of us combined, and it is necessary for supplies that they cannot get because they do not have money. You have the worst homeless situation in America, with older people and families living in tents, thousands without basic health care, and now thousands of people not getting paid to do their jobs, but that's give a billionaire, a billionaire, $150 million instead of using that money on truly people who need it. Not a guy with five homes, four limos, three planes, two Mercedes, and as much darned poultry, gin and pear trees as he'd ever want to get. That's insane, and we, the people, will not let it happen. If you will vote, and I'm told you're going to vote for us, we will file a court action suit tomorrow morning and make sure this does not go through. It is absolutely insane that we have to be here. Oh, God. I'd say, I want to know, who's going to be next? I think the Diamondbacks are out front. They're waiting for their $150 million. So are the Coyotes and everybody else. Oh, wait a minute. They've been told no by Glendale already, because they're smart enough to know you don't give a billionaire money that could help so many things in this city.
Thank you. Franklin? I don't... Oliveri? Am I even close? And then Greta Rogers.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the Phoenix City Council. I support this, and I take the light rail to the games. I carpool with people, and I'm looking forward to when they build a new facility. It'll be fantastic. So, I'm hoping that you pass this.
Thank you. If I remember right, you came to every one of the hearings, so thank you for doing that. Did someone take Greta the microphone? You got it. Okay. Can't hear you.
Elda.
Okay, go.
Thank you. My name is Greta Rogers, and I'm a longtime resident of this city. I spoke last week when this was first brought up, and I was unalterably opposed to it. Not because I have any disaffection for the Suns or any other professional sports team in the city. I do not. They're a part of a large city and a part of the mixed culture of a large city. What I was objecting to, and I still do, this was not, this study was done in the quiet of secluded, closed-door meetings between the city manager and Mr. Sarver, at Mr. Sarver's request to meet only with the city manager. That's his right to request. However, when a plan develops to the point that this one has, it requires greater public notification of what is going on. And that's what I object to. There was none until last week. Furthermore, Ed very generously provided me with the original contract and ongoing agreements between the Phoenix Suns and today. The original was signed between the City of Phoenix and Jerry Colangelo, who brought the Suns to Phoenix. It's a very, it's a 200-plus-page agreement, and you can read about 10 at a time, or you'll fall asleep. It's strictly a bunch of legalese. But what the city did not do, and should have done, because this is a multimillion-dollar amount of money that is going to be spent to upgrade and update and bring to present-day construction safety standards, this 30-year-old facility. I'm three times that old, and my facility's going pretty well. But they didn't do, they didn't do competitive bidding for a construction engineer or a construction engineering company to go to that building and analyze the physical construction needs that have to be updated, replaced, or repaired. And they came to the figure of $230 mil. I guess somebody just picked a figure out of the air and said, "That sounds okay, and that'll probably about cover it." They have no more idea what will or won't cover it than I do, and I'm no construction engineer, but I do have the equality of common sense.
Thank you.
And fair play to the citizens of this city. Therefore, at this time, I recommend that this be turned down and the process be returned to legal process. Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie Harvey? And then Molly Weiss.
My name is Maggie Harvey, and I'm proud to say I'm not only a member of the Phoenix Suns Golden Granny, a group that has seniors from the age of 55 to 93 who perform at the arena and also local charities. I'm also a part of the arena history. From 1993 to 2003, I started working as a nusher, eventually becoming the events manager. The arena gave me hope and many opportunities, just like it does for the 1,000-plus full-time and part-time employees, who spend many of their nights and weekends ensuring that guests create memories that last a lifetime. Along the way, it's been amazing seeing downtown Phoenix transform into what's become today with the development of hotels, restaurants, Copper Square, and other entertainment. As the event manager for the Phoenix Suns, Phoenix Mercury, and the Rattler As the event manager for the Phoenix Suns, Phoenix Mercury, and the Rattlers, as well as other special events, such as major concerts, Disney on Ice, and multicultural events, I got to see firsthand its impact on our community. It's become a staple of our city, an icon in the industry, and where millions have broken away from everyday life. In closing, let me just say that although the arena now has plenty of wrinkles, like us seniors, it is time to maintain it so you can continue to offer opportunities to employees and guests alike. Please save those jobs at the arena and vote yes on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Molly will be Mark Kadenas.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm one of the people that you put on the screen there that works part-time at the arena, and I also have Sun season tickets, and I love it, and I will continue to have those tickets. I've attended two of the meetings, one at the arena and one in District Eight where I live, and it was very interesting. Once the people found out what was really happening and that it was no new sales tax, a lot of people changed their mind. The Talking Stick Resort Arena is not a Suns arena. It is a sports and entertainment venue. It brings in millions of dollars to the city. It also serves as an overflow space for the convention center. Convention center, conventions may be lost, and downtown would become a ghost town without activities at the arena. The NCAA Final Four and Super Bowl are coming back to Phoenix because of what there is in downtown Phoenix, such as the arena. WWE, which is coming this week, chose Phoenix because they have events at the arena, at the ballpark, and at the convention center, and these are things that we want to keep there. I also want to thank the Suns. They have provided for over 20 years basketball camps for public housing residents in Phoenix and throughout the state for low-income youth. They've also provided thousands of tickets for Suns and other events over the past 20 years. They also built one of the first outdoor basketball courts in one of the public housing projects owned by the city that's actually not far from here, and it is used all the I urge the city council to think long-term and make the renovations and keep making Phoenix great. Thank you.
Thank you. Following Mark is Rick Powell.
Mayor Williams, honorable council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. Phoenix is my home. It's where my parents immigrated to from Mexico in the '70s. In the '80s, it's where I was born at County Hospital, and it's where my fiancee and I have decided, of all the places in the world, to make our home. And with a nod to the CEO of the Phoenix Suns, when I served 12 months overseas in Iraq, what I, what two of the items that I brought with me were a Phoenix Suns flag and a Steve Nash jersey with the word "Phoenix" on it, which I no longer fit anymore, by the way. But it's still hanging in my closet. It's part of who I am. It's, it's part of my immense pride that I have for Phoenix, and it's part of who I will be forever. Now, I'll be remiss to mention, you know, even though I think the votes are here for this deal, but we can also be, we can also disagree without being disagreeable. Now, I'm a resident of District Seven, and on my way to my office this morning from Maryville, I drove on streets that were full of potholes, which under Prop 104 were promised to be repaved. Instead, there's been slurry seal, which is abandoned on our roads. Now, later this month, we also have a veterans' stand-down event at the Coliseum, which no longer provides overnight dwelling, and they're having a problem providing dental services in even a mile from here. We have CAS, which, by the way, I've stayed at, and I would invite any members of the council to stay with me, and you will see at 6:00 PM the amount of, the number of our homeless populations that are turning away. Now, this is a matter of our priorities. The money that's in the fund can be used to fix crucial problems that exist in our face every day. So instead of investing in, it really, it comes down to investing in Phoenix residents again. So I ask that you vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just mention, I don't think a lot of people know, but we did pass a $200 million bonding proposal to help our streets. Help is on the way. Help is on the way. You'll probably start seeing a lot of construction in March, but I think it hasn't gotten a lot of news or news reporting, but help is on the way.
Mayor, may I address that real quick, too?
Please.
Because the city of Phoenix did a study that shows that in the next five years, the next five years, we will need $1.6 billion just to bring our streets up to normal, just to be acceptable. And if we wait anything, any longer than five years, that, those are more streets that are going to be in disrepair. So we got to make sure that this $200 million that we appropriated came from other funds and came from other areas, but at the end of the day, and it was a step, and I appreciated the step. It took me a year to get us to even vote on something like that, but it does not complete the progress that we need to have in the city of Phoenix. The city of Phoenix has a road system that is pathetically bad. It's an embarrassment, but it's also a danger to the public. You hit one of those potholes, you can be in the air. We have signs that are melting, melting, in the city of Phoenix. Drive by and tell me if that makes you proud. It does not. So it's nice to talk about these marginal incremental steps, and that's good that we move in those directions. But mind you, it does not solve the problem, nor does it even get close to solving the overall problem with the streets in the city of Phoenix.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mendoza.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to follow up on his comments. The city of Phoenix is the only city that spends millions of dollars on homeless, so I just want to make sure that we put this out there so people know that we're doing more than other cities around us. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you're on your, what's your name?
Rick Powell.
Come on down. And then Ginger Brandt.
Thank you, Mayor Williams and council. The arena is a valuable asset for the city. The asset needs to be maintained and renovated periodically, and I'm glad the city is looking to spend the money to renovate the arena. I think it's appropriate that the Suns are also going to put in some money to help renovate the arena. But the proposal that's currently on the table has Phoenix paying too much money into the deal and the Suns receiving too many benefits, so please vote against this deal. And then, when you send your negotiators back to the room to negotiate the improved deal, I would hope that you would include one specific item in that improved deal. When I read about the current agreement, there's a lot of talk about this obsolescence clause. That sounds to me like some sort of nuclear option. I don't know who decided to put that option into the original agreement. It sounds like a really horrible deal, and I sure hope that whatever deal comes out of this process does not have a similar obsolescence clause, so that in 12 years, we won't be doing the same thing again. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you. Jerry Colangelo was a genius. And then Don Brown.
Good afternoon, Mayor Williams and council members. My name is Ginger Brandt, and I am with Phoenix Children's Hospital Foundation. I'm also a proud resident of the city of Phoenix. For 36 years, Phoenix Children's Hospital has provided world-class care to children and families in Arizona. Philanthropic support from individuals, foundations, and corporate partners is critical to our mission of providing the best available medical treatment to sick children. The Phoenix Suns and Phoenix Suns Charities have been longstanding partners and always rise to the occasion when support is needed. From things like decorating a holiday tree in the hospital lobby, basketballs for our care program that promotes play and activity for the prevention of premature heart disease and type 2 diabetes, a Papa Shot game for our Child Life Zone, and a Playmaker Grant that supported the expansion of our emergency department and Level One Pediatric Trauma Center that serves the most critical patients statewide. They often provide tickets so families and children can attend a game or an event like Disney on Ice recently after they are discharged from the hospital. And arena staff willingly accommodate those with special dietary needs or require wheelchair access. But not all of our kids, however, have the opportunity to attend or experience a game, so the Suns bring their game to PCH. The most recent visit came on a Sunday afternoon in December. Straight from practice and with little fanfare, several players, cheerleaders, visited the zone, our state-of-the-art play area that provides an escape for patients. They played video games, foosball, air hockey. They signed autographs and handed out stuffed gorillas, t-shirts, and hats, and I can't begin to describe the joy that these type of visits bring. Many of our sickest kids, however, are unable to leave their rooms. So you can imagine the overwhelming excitement when Devin Booker and his family arrived on Christmas Eve to visit patients at PCH. He did bedside visits and spent time with some of our sickest kids. These are just a few examples of the impact the organization has had on Phoenix Children's. Our partnership with the Suns has helped us fulfill our mission of providing hope, healing, and world-class health care to children and their families. I'm here today with the belief that the Suns' presence in downtown can only strengthen their ability to give back and support Phoenix and the surrounding communities.
Thank you.
We truly value their partnership, both on and off the court. Thank you.
Gus Lazzur. And then Walter Gray.
City Council and Mayor, thank you for your time. I wear a couple of hats as well. I'm a dad who's played junior sons at the YMCA, so, so thank you, YMCA. I've worked at St. Joe's in Rehab, where there's the Suns Room, which is a room painted Suns with autographs of, just like at PCH, of players in the gorilla and coaches coming onto campus for people that can't leave. And then, when I was looking at the presentation, one of the key components that I really appreciate working for Ability 360, which is a nonprofit that supports advocacy for people with disabilities to see access that you want to improve in regards to Americans with Disabilities Act, it has changed over the years, and it'll continue to change. And you have a remarkable ADA coordinator, so she deserves a pat on the back. But they really do take it to the next level. The support the Phoenix Suns Charities has given to wheelchair basketball programs in the community for years has been tremendous, and so for that, I say thank you, and I look forward to the renovations, and I hope you support it and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just want to agree with most of the things that are said here. We know that the arena jump-started downtown. We know that it's going to, the money balances out for the improvements. We own the building. We have to make the improvements. But I, I think a little differently. The arena is a regional facility. It benefits the whole region. 70% of the ticket holders come from outside of Phoenix. What I'd like to see is that we jump-start West Phoenix, move the Suns to the Glendale Arena, share with the Coyotes, make it up more. And then also, the sites downtown and in the city and in the region are limited. That's why the arena is not big enough, and also why the Chase Field is not big enough. The upper deck of Chase Field is unusually steep. You could have a world-class sports complex on the 101 with light rail that would last well into the future and satisfy everybody. The Suns will, regardless of where they are, they're going to be a good charity, a good, we hope, a better team, find a point guard, and also, they'll continue their charities, they'll be profitable, they'll continue to do all the things they're doing. Downtown already has, with the, what the city has done with all these subsidies for the millennials is on its own.
Thank you.
Rents are going high in downtown Phoenix. Everybody's making money.
Thank you. Don Trapp, followed by Michael Johnson, and then Jacob Adams.
Mayor and council members, my name is Don Trapp, and I'm the executive director for the Civitan Foundation. Bo Larson really told you a lot about what we do. I'd like to say that we actually also got our start in 1968, the same time that the Phoenix Suns got their start. The Phoenix Suns, everybody has been here today talking a lot about the charities and what they've done. You talked a few minutes about that the Phoenix, the city of Phoenix, really helps with homelessness. Cities can't do it all. They really cannot. The funds are not there. The people are not there. The nonprofits are here to help, and with partnerships with the Phoenix Suns charities, we're able to do that. Without them, we would not be able to do that. So we are able to expand the services that are here in our city that are so needed with the partnership with the Phoenix Suns. So I urge you to vote yes, and let us continue to support the things that you cannot. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just say one thing before you start it? I just want to make one comment about, I'm just appalled that someone would come to this city council meeting and admit to shooting an elected official and then tell other elected officials he did it because they made a decision that he was against. And I would encourage the council to have the police department review that video and see exactly what was said to make sure that there's no threat in there. But I am appalled with something like that to happen and someone to come here and be able to do that. Now...
Now we'll start.
Okay. Now, as the council, as the councilman that was on the city council that helped lead the resurgence for the downtown area, we would not have the downtown area that we have right now had it not been for the Phoenix Suns in that arena. The arena was the anchor. So when we start to look at exactly what we have, we're not just talking about an arena. We're talking about all the things that we've heard, but to really make it more plainly and clearly, we're talking about people. We're talking about people who have benefited from it. We're talking about all the hotels. We're talking about the restaurants. We're talking about the businesses, those people who work in those places every day to make a living who contributed. We're talking about the small businesses, as we talk about small businesses and economic development, that that arena has helped us start off and build up, that we continue to do that. We wouldn't be where we were today. You heard earlier, as I talked about, the cityscape. Cityscape would not have been built and set here in downtown Phoenix had it not been for that arena being there. It was the arena who led the investors to go ahead and continue to work on that, to invest in it, when we were going through a recession. But you know, the first area that rebounded back was the downtown area. It was the downtown area because the people invested in the people, and it's all about the people. We're forgetting about those things. We've heard nonprofits come up and talk about what they've won, what they've had. We've talked about the investments that they made. We look at the restaurants and all the places we have downtown. It's about the people and what we have. I encourage you, this is not about Sarver. It is not about the Phoenix Suns. It is about the economic growth and development of the city of Phoenix. It's about those All-Star Games, the basketball All-Star Game that we had here, baseball All-Star Game that we had here. We had the Super Bowl Games that we had here, where people from all over this city, not just the city, but the state of Arizona, had the opportunity to come down here with their families in downtown Phoenix and sharing those things that they would never have that opportunity in, young kids growing up to have to do it. And I'm going to wrap up. My daughter danced for the Phoenix Suns all her career going through college at ASU. And I would tell you that the impact that those things have on what the economic growth and development of this city is going to be and how we're going to support those people is involved in that city. The arena is the anchor to downtown, and we must support the anchor. And I encourage you not to look at... And I encourage you not to look at the Suns...
Thank you.
Not just to look at that, but to look at what all it's doing. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you.
So, Michael, can you give us the slogan for District 8?
Michael, everybody knows I love District 8. There's no doubt about that. I love District 8. But I love the city of Phoenix and all that it stands for and that the greatness that we have. We talk about the phoenix bird, just like you see with the Phoenix Suns. It means rising from ashes and dust into greatness, and that's what we have here, that's what we have with the arena, that's what we have with the Suns, that's what we have with all of our citizens and people here in the city of Phoenix. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Jacob Adams. And then Bramley Paulin.
Mayor, Council members, my name is Jake Adams and I am the Chief Development Officer at Southwest Human Development. We are Arizona and the nation's largest early childhood nonprofit, working with young children zero to five. So we work with babies, preschoolers, and toddlers. The Phoenix Suns have been wonderful supporters of our Birth to Five Helpline over the past five years, and we've fielded literally thousands of calls from across the city of Phoenix and supporting parents with young children. And any of you who have had or do have young children are probably aware, it's not always easy to raise a young child. And so the Birth to Five Helpline is a program that's available. I know some of the council members have shared the Birth to Five Helpline with some of their constituents, and we really appreciate that as well. The Phoenix Suns have also contributed to our services for children with disabilities. We work with kids with severe physical disabilities as well as children with developmental delays and disorders, and the Phoenix Suns have been a great partner on that. Thank you very much. Oh, and they've also given us thousands, literally thousands of tickets for families who would never be able to go see a professional sporting event. And that's really important because these families just love it. They have such a great time and there's no way they'd be able to see that live without the help of the Suns. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Then Joel Nathanson. You follow.
Mayor, before my time starts, I am here on behalf of, asked to speak for several people, if you would...
You have six minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. When you take into consideration the city's portion of the proposed budget and its financing, its payments, we're actually talking about the city investing closer to $250 million and not $150 million as everyone has been led to believe. The public has also been led to believe that taxpayer dollars are not being used since the money comes from hotel and rental car taxes. This is misleading. The money being collected are public funds, the same as tax dollars from citizens. When this money source is used for the arena, it removes a source of funds that may be used to pay for many other necessary services, such as police and fire, streets, water, transportation, services for the homeless, the arts, affordable housing, historic preservation, and so on. When this money source is not available for these other important issues, the city's alternative is to raise user fees and raise taxes, and therefore, the citizens of Phoenix will end up paying one way or another. When addressing the term obsolescence, we only need to look as far as the Suns, who have failed to properly maintain the building by not following a very regimented and thorough operations and maintenance program with detailed preventative maintenance, even when the pipes are 27 years old and after use by four million attendees. The same failure to maintain caused the flood at the Burton Bar Library. This entire proposal was predicated on a flawed feasibility study. Flawed in that the sole study was conducted by the Suns, using their own paid operatives under a scheme to purposefully hide the study from the public by way of a confidentiality agreement. Council members have been forbidden from obtaining your own copy of the study for you to read and develop your own independent analysis and have a full context of the study. The council has only viewed edited excerpts in closed-door executive sessions and fed limited PowerPoint presentations prepared by Suns operatives where you were prohibited from taking meeting notes. What is it about the study the Suns don't want you and the public to know? As elected leaders, how have you allowed anybody to tell you what information you can't and can't have access to? That you have allowed staff to dictate to you whether you can even take meeting notes? Time and time again, this council has made statements about leadership and process. Well, this process is clearly broken. You have allowed it to be broken. You have obediently followed along a secretive process only to have staff narrowly funnel limited information about this proposal to you so that the Suns can determine the outcome that it wants. I hardly call that leadership. Stop using leadership as if it's a hashtag. The audacity of this proposal is due to your failure to place the interest of the citizens over the interest of the Suns. You have a fiduciary responsibility to negotiate the best terms possible for all taxpayers. You have failed. You have failed to be good stewards of public money. I challenge you to say no to this proposal and to direct staff to go back and negotiate terms so that you are looking out for the best terms of your constituents. Send a very clear message to staff that you will not allow them to treat you like children, that you demand that they release to you all of the information that is necessary for each one of you to make your own independent evaluation, and that the only way for you to have an independent evaluation is for you to conduct your own independent unbiased study. Staff foolishly started the negotiation process under the pretext that the Suns will leave. It is far less expensive for the Suns to remain downtown and pay for all of the renovations while continuing to grow its fantastic $1.2 billion valuation. Much of the project's budget is clearly beneficial only to the Suns' profits. It is okay to vote no on this proposal. The sky is not going to fall, the arena will not disappear into the abyss, the Suns are not going to leave, and the city will continue to receive annually all of the many millions of dollars of sales tax revenue that the city has always received. Ms. Stark, in answer to your earlier question about the obsolescence, I would like to be very clear. There is no legal obligation for the city to pay a single penny for any part of the renovation, even after arbitration process. Voting no is not the end to the negotiations, but the beginning. Mayor and Council, it is time for you to stop following along blindly and to step up and become the leaders that you all claim to be. The city will never receive more benefit from this renovation than if the city were to use the source of this funds and invest in the many other needed services. Mr. Noakowski, what message is this sending?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you tell us your name again?
Sorry?
Could you just tell us your name again?
My name is Bramley Paulin.
Oh, Bramley, that's right.
Okay. Mark Watson and then Joel... I'm sorry, I can't. Narhanson?
Nathanson.
Sorry. Oh. Yeah. Yeah, he was next. I recognized the shirt.
Thank you. My name is Joel Nathanson. I've been a resident here in Phoenix for just under 20 years, and I'm a huge, huge Phoenix Suns fan. Through the ups and the downs, but huge Phoenix Suns fan. I gotta say, though, I'm adamantly against this deal. The math just doesn't make sense. I mean, to spend $150 million to make $12.5 million back per year over the next 15 years? What happens then? What happens then? They're gonna come here with their hands open, looking for more money. And again, we'll probably give it to them. But, I mean, the reality is, I mean, everyone that has come up here today in support seems to be on the Phoenix Suns payroll. And citizens like myself that live downtown here, who, you know, have to pay to go to games and go experience it, also now our tax dollars are going towards the stadium as well. So I just have to adamantly say I'm against this.
Mayor Williams, fellow council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Mark Watson. I also work for a national contractor that's been involved, working with many projects downtown here in Phoenix. I live and work in Phoenix area, as I mentioned, and I regularly attend games and events at the arena. I remember getting caught on the kiss cam once to a wonderful woman that I'm now married to. So, but, when I moved here 12 years ago, I came from the Denver area, and some of the things that have been talked about need to be kind of emphasized a little bit more. How Denver experienced a lot of growth because of the arenas and money that they put into the Pepsi Center, which has the Nuggets, which got beat by the Suns. The Coors Field, the baseball field, and all those main arenas that helped the downtown growth for a lot of projects that my company benefited from and building all this is what really helped the economic development of Denver. And I think that's something that needs to be learned upon, is what other cities have done and to study the benefits that come from that. So I'm in support of this, of course, and I urge you to vote for it also. Thank you.
Thank you. I may, I think it's N-A-R-H-A-N?
That was me.
Oh, that was you? All right. Steve Moore. I guess I like that shirt. Hey, it's been a long afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. I should've worn a different shirt today, but thank you for the time. My name is Steve Moore and I'm president of Visit Phoenix, and I reside in this great city of Phoenix. And I'm here today in support of the proposed Talking Stick Arena renovation. As has been widely noted today, obviously, the arena is home to the Phoenix Suns and the Phoenix Mercury, and also numerous concerts, conventions, and other events that create an enormous economic impact each year. It has hosted two NBA All-Star Games, one in '96 and one in 2009, when at the same time we premiered the new light rail. This week's Rural Rumble was mentioned as it moves into town three nights there, one night in the chase. Even the Super Bowl Media's Day in 2015 was held in the arena, as was the 2011 MLB All-Star Games staging area for that parade that July. The arena brings thousands of people to our downtown benefiting local restaurants, attractions, and the performing arts. This influx of people walking the streets and enjoying our revitalized downtown is what this community and you have worked very hard to achieve. The arena also has the added benefit of its immediate proximity to our new Phoenix Convention Center, further strengthening our attractiveness for large meetings, trade shows, and events. In fact, both the Democratic and Republican National Conventions looked very hard at us in 2012 and 2016 because of the arena and it being just across the street from the Phoenix Convention Center. The effort to renovate Talking Stick Resort Arena will not raise any new taxes, and your actions to renovate the facility will continue to make our central district a great place to live, work, and play. I ask for your support of the renovation, and I thank you very much.
May I ask Steve a question here?
Go ahead.
Steve, I think it's really important that people know that, I know I've been on a couple trips with you to try to attract conventions and meetings here. Our convention center is one of the largest in the country, but there are conventions that need bigger spaces, and I know that we were able to win some of those bids because of the arena and also because of Chase Field. Is that true, or...
Yes, sir. Recently forthcoming is American Legion Convention, also bidding on the Assemblies of God. There's been a lot of others, the Volleyball USA, some others, and so it's been very helpful. What we're really excited about also is this new practice facility also makes some dates available as well to work even other events into it, the facility.
How many square feet do we have of rental space in the convention center?
It's about $900,000 if you include the south hall. We have $315,000 downstairs contiguous, upstairs is $189,000, and in the middle is this great level of meeting space. And then, of course, the proximity to the arena for assemblage, and that makes for a great package downtown, along with hotel package and the vibrancy of what's all of you have built.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you not hear me?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Chris Camacho, President and CEO of Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. Like many of my colleagues have stated, and so I won't repeat some of the comments, but the importance of the downtown renaissance that's occurred over the last decade is certainly palatable. As my job, where I get to travel around the world and around the country and tell the story of Greater Phoenix, and specifically the transition that Phoenix has undertaken in the last decade, decade and a half, it's remarkable. Just last week, Christine and I sat at Cityscape in the Red Development Project at dinner talking with a New York Times reporter that referenced the vibrancy and just the change that is, that he experienced as someone that grew up in Phoenix, moved to California, and has spent the rest of his time in New York. And so coming back to Phoenix, there was some nostalgia about that experience. And so, being able to tell the water story, the vibrancy story, the technology story, the jobs density stories that exist is really important. And how that ties into the arena project and why we support the arena project is that this has been the catalyst, as the former councilman mentioned, and it's opened up a new view of how companies evaluate markets. Companies are either sliding backwards or they're advancing aggressively forward. And so these kind of continued investments showed a renewed commitment from the public sector to unite with the private sector, to enable us to continue to invest and see not only sports teams but entertainment opportunities evolve. And one of the things that I shared, and I'll share this in my last 29 seconds here, with a New York Times individual who, again, we talked to the tier-one media outlets. Overwhelmingly, the things that have changed in downtown, Arizona State University has dramatically changed the reputation, the arts and culture scene in the local restaurant management teams that have bet on Phoenix have emphatically changed. And being in downtown and seeing the number of technology companies and even small businesses evolve in the downtown market are really what has changed the opinion of Metro Phoenix. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak and endorse and support this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you Mr. Cantor?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Can I proceed?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Just as the Suns are an NBA team, repair, renovating, updating, and remodeling are construction. You cannot just add the word "new" in front of Chapter 27 using the word "construction" and say that Chapter 27 does not apply and therefore there does not have to be a vote of the citizens of this city of Phoenix. Let the people decide. If this project is so great and the Suns have been good and they have been entertaining, let the people decide. That's why Chapter 27 was added to the city charter back after the Suns had already started. And I appreciate the mayor and the city manager writing me back and saying, "This is new construction, so Chapter 27 does not apply." The word "new" is a simple word. It has plain meaning, and it's not in the ordinance. If the people wanted it to only apply to new construction, they would've added the word "new." And any court is going to agree to that. That's a rule, a basic interpretation of law. You cannot change the plain meaning and you cannot add words. Now, is this construction? I know you've gone to great lengths to not use the word "construction." You're calling it "repair."
You're calling it repairs, renovating, updating, remodeling, but not construction. Well, I don't think anybody will argue about it, but I am going to talk about it just in case somebody doesn't think this is construction. It involves bids, plans, drawings, architect, building codes, permits, inspections, project managers, structural engineers, ADA construction standards, service engineer, general contractor, subcontractor, changing walls, floors, ceilings, kitchen, practice areas, and you're going to end up with a new building, which the Arizona Republic in its op-ed today said... And by the way, where's the light? I'm sorry. Oh, okay, sorry.
Thank you.
It's going to be a new building. As a result of the new construction, it requires a vote. The Arizona Republic, I commend them for their articles they've been running. Economists say this is a bad deal. It doesn't make money. You take 15,000 people going to a Suns game, 55 games a year, you add in the lousy $4 million rent a year, it's a money loser. I don't want to get stuck with a building like the Glendale, what's not paid for at the end of 15 years when they opt out. Why don't you bring the Coyotes? That was one of the top five emails the staff said they got.
Your time's up now.
We haven't heard about...
Thank you. I have one more card, Kim Sabo, and then I have let everyone who is opposed speak. I still have 29 cards that wish to speak and 30 cards in support that don't wish to speak. So I think we have a pretty good view of what the audience thinks, so I will do this, and then I think we will put the rest of the information into the record, and council can make a decision.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor Williams and City Council members. I'm Kim Sabo, President and CEO of the Arizona Lodging and Tourism Association, also known as the AZLTA. The AZLTA is the premier advocate for the state's lodging and tourism industry. As the premier advocate for the state's travel and tourism sector, we represent numerous Arizona resorts, hotels, tourist attractions, marketing organizations, arts organizations, airlines, and professional sports teams. Thank you for this opportunity to weigh in publicly and share our support for the renovation and modernization of the nearly 30-year-old Talking Stick Resort Arena. Since its inception in 1989, the city of Phoenix has been operating a fund derived from tourism that has provided the necessary funds to maintain the arena. The vast and diverse membership of the AZLTA believes the city should continue that policy and utilize the sports facility funds to update and improve the arena. We fully understand the funds generated from this tourism tax assessed on hotel rooms and rental cars provides funding for Phoenix to help sustain and maintain Talking Stick Resort Arena. As a key stakeholder in this conversation, our organization enthusiastically supports this prudent proposal as a sensible way to maintain a vibrant downtown. Recognizing this approach is also a way to help increase tourism and tourism revenues to Phoenix and surrounding areas. Over the 30 years this tax has been operating, the AZLTA finds that these rates provide solid funding for the city that is not overly burdensome to our valued hotel and lodging members. The bottom line is that Talking Stick Resort Arena is the premier downtown Phoenix destination for entertainment, youth events, cultural programs, conventions, and professional sports. The arena hosts more than 300 events each year, more than 40 million guests have stepped foot into the arena, and the arena pays for itself generating $182 million in direct economic impact for the city of Phoenix.
Thank you.
On behalf of the AZLTA, we encourage the council to please approve this proposal.
Thank you. I have had a request by the Councilwoman Gavera wishes to make a motion, and then we can have discussion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve items 26 and 27 with the following changes. I would like to request an amendment to the terms sheet to add additional language on Section 2.7 that adds the following. The owner's representative will also monitor the execution of the improvements to ensure the improvements outlined in Exhibit A of the term sheet project are completed. Those programming improvements must be completed as they have been described, which by current estimates, when implemented, are estimated to equal approximately $235 million, and add additional language to Section 6 to say, "The Suns commit to a minimum of $10 million in community benefits in 2019, including $2.6 million to offset cuts to the citywide Head Start program." Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question or friendly clarification in there. I wanted to know if that includes the apprenticeship?
Yes.
To include the city apprenticeships?
Thank you. Councilman Noakowski?
Mayor, I have some comments and then some concerns also. First of all, I just want to thank the, our staff, especially Chris Mackey and her staff for going out into the community and preparing an awesome explanation of what this fund and what the responsibility of the city is. I mean, a lot of people really didn't understand that the city of Phoenix owned the building. A lot of people thought it was owned by the Phoenix Suns or even by the Talking Stick Arena was actually owned by the reservation. But I think it's very clear that we own it. Also, I needed some clarification on the contract and some of the, some of the concerns on the contract is oversight. I mean, there is one thing where on Section 2.1, where the procurement aspect of it, that it says that Phoenix may hire their own representative to monitor the expenses of Phoenix funds. I think we need to take the word "may" out of that and that Phoenix will hire. I think it's so important that if we're going to pass this, that we need to have somebody that, that is on our payroll, making sure that our monies are being spent the way they should be spent and that everything is on the up and up. And also, I think there needs to be some kind of, some way to report back directly to the council. I'm not sure if it should be on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis, but I believe that we need to be updated because for the last 11 years I've been on the council, I really haven't gotten an update except for the last two years. Then we started talking about this, this situation. So I would like to add a friendly amendment that we look at the section where it's procurement, that 2.1, and we change the wording where it says on the contract itself, where it says Phoenix will, I mean, Phoenix may to will, and that we put some type of verbiage in there that a report that, that Phoenix, the expenditures, and a report comes directly to the council on a monthly basis. The other thing I'm very concerned about is that...
What? An amendment, correct?
Right.
Do you agree?
Yes.
Okay. And does the second agree?
Okay.
And, and then the other thing is on the whole aspect of, I heard a concern about the 13 or the 12 million point eight of tax revenues. Can you explain that, how it's broken down? Because I know that some individuals are saying it's, it's just the arena tax revenue. Others are saying it's outside. Others are saying it's the nights of, of games and events and stuff like, and Chris, if you can explain to me what that is, right?
I'd be happy to, sir. Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, it is made up of quite a number of numbers, so I'll talk you through them, and I'll apologize, my eyes are getting a bit old, so I'm going to slip my glasses on. So it is taxes and other revenue to the facility, to the city. So it is $1.5 million in rent to the city from the arena. It is $2.3 million in direct taxes attributable to that address. It is 5.5 million in hospitality, hospitality tax, and related taxes to the arena. So let me talk you through what that one is. So what we looked at doing an economic impact as we look at those, I try to be hyperconservative. So I used an analysis that was done by Berkeley Data Science, and it took every NBA baseball and football team, and it took their price of their tickets, it took the, if you purchased two beers, two hot dogs, and two inexpensive hats, and it came up with a cost per person of attendance for every team across the country. And for the Suns, that's $81.25 per attendee. Then we multiplied that by the number of attendees that are listed on ESPN. We did the same thing for the Mercury. We did the same thing for the Rattlers. Then what we did was we took the concerts that are held at the facility, and we took the average ticket price, and we extrapolated the same information. And so what we said was that everyone who attends would buy an $11 drink or something at the facility, and we took an analysis that said dinner for two is $56. And so we used that information and provided a tax against that. Then what we also did was we said 1% of the people attending an event at the facility would stay in a hotel in downtown Phoenix. Maybe it's, it's people from out of town, it's somebody who's enjoying a long weekend...
That's just 1%.
1%. Enjoying a long weekend or doing something like that at a sporting event. For a concert for us, we, and that was for a sporting event or for a family-related event was 1%. When we looked at our concerts, we said that 5%, and we followed a national model that was put together by Digital Media News that we were able to use, and also information off our Arizona Office of Tourism, and we're able to use that information. We said 5%. And we use the average hotel rent that's published by Smith Travel Group for hotels in downtown Phoenix. And then we ran the taxes based on that, so hyperconservative to come up with that $5.5 million. And then we also have $3.5 million, and that's city taxes from businesses that support the arena. So in my, Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, in my professional opinion, and I've run these models for 30 years, I'm a girl who'd rather underpromise and overdeliver, and so we ran a very conservative estimate that's already been fact-checked and deemed to be authorized, deemed to be accurate.
Mayor, another suggestion is I've been hearing out there in the community, we've been going out to these meetings and even neighborhood meetings, that we have a big concern about public safety, especially police officers and representing the downtown area. That's one of the things that we hear a lot of, is that we need more police officers in the downtown area. I was just wondering if, if the maker of the motion would be acceptive of 80% of that revenue that's generated goes into public safety, and that would be public safety throughout the whole city of Phoenix.
Thank you. I just want to make the comment, remember, we have open positions that are fully funded, and our problem is, is we can't hire people. For the last two years, our budget has funded, I think, more than 200 a year, new hires, and we haven't been able to do that, so...
I believe there's...
Can you make that, if needed? I mean, I, I don't want to allocate more money if we're never going to hire them.
Can we...
I'll go ahead.
Can we ask about the current, what the current revenue is for the arena before making that?
Mayor, members of the council, so if you think about the 12.8 million, I'm getting a lot of feedback up here from our audio guys. If you think about the 12.8 million, that goes to the general fund, and the general fund is approximately 80% allocated to our public safety efforts. So I, that, I'm hearing that's what Councilman Noakowski is referring to, that that revenue is a public safety revenue as it's going to the general fund, and that's how the general fund allocates.
And I want to make sure it's...
I'm very supportive of having more police officers. Don't get me wrong.
I just want to make sure that...
I just want to make sure...
We continue to support public safety and that 80% of that revenue is towards public safety in somehow, some way.
And when you say public safety, you also mean fleet equipment?
Absolutely.
Because we need that, too.
Everything, correct.
Safety, we count fleet equipment, municipal court prosecutors, public defenders, it's all into that calculation, our general fund budget.
I support it. Go ahead.
I have a question about that, because the 12 goes into the general fund. That 80%, I want to say 80%, but I might be off, is supported in public safety, meaning fire and police.
It's between 75 and 80% would include police, fire, homeland security, courts, prosecutors, public defenders, and then we would also, the equipment and materials that we, the vehicles are all, would all be part of that.
My question to you is, with the budget that we have now, this is additional dollars. We're talking, we're adding additional dollars because the 12-point whatever is already included in our general fund.
Correct.
So my question to you is, for the budget person, can we sustain it?
We're securing, may I answer that? I just want to make sure that 80% of that revenue that goes back to the general fund is secure for public safety, because our budget can actually go different directions with, with the funding that's being put in the general fund. So as an advocate of public safety, I just want to secure that 80% of that tax revenue goes back in, in our, in our public safety coffers.
Well, I believe we're all advocates for public safety. My question, my question is, do we have the capacity, the budget? Because the 12 already goes into the general fund and is allocated. Now we're saying out of the 12, we want 80% of the 12 to go to public safety.
The 12.8 million was calculated by Ms. Mackey is a calculation based on this year, I believe, yes?
City manager, that's correct.
So that's, that's already accounted for in our general fund budget as a revenue, and the general fund is somewhere between 70 and 80%, particularly when you put vehicles in there, to public safety.
So it's already allocated.
Yes. Going forward, there could be incremental revenue.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm hearing. What I'm saying, it's already allocated. I'm hearing, what I am hearing, and I want to get it clear, that we would then have additional dollars at 80%. That's what I'm hearing.
Mayor, may I respond to that, Mayor? I want to make sure and secure in the future that this, that 80% of that revenue that goes into our general fund is allocated to police. Right now, it's about that, but in the future, I'm afraid that it might switch in different directions, but I want to make sure that...
Okay.
I heard a large cry from the community about public safety, and I just want to make sure that in, in the near future, that, that 80% doesn't become 50% or 40%.
Okay. So I understand what the request is. The request is to maintain 80% of public safety's budget continuously. If we go through a recession, we will still maintain 80% of that budget.
We can do an accounting of that incremental revenue from the arena and, and show how it is consistent with that request to have 80% of it to public safety.
Okay.
Public safety as defined broadly is, is my understanding, police, fire, homeland security, courts, prosecutors, vehicles.
Okay. I understand that, and we're telling, talking about 12-point something, 12.8, and my understanding is, once we go through paying debt service and all these other things that go with the 12.8, we really get 2.6.
That's a different pocket of money, isn't it?
I just want to be clear.
Mayor, City Council, so the debt service is paid out of the sports facilities fund, right? Which is the tourist dollars that we're talking about, the 20 million a year. If I could just add a little bit of clarity here, so the one thing that, from an accounting perspective, that we know for sure is going up per the proposed terms in agreement, in the agreement, is the rent portion. And so we're going to be going from 1.5 million to probably 3 to 4 million. There's going to be an obvious incremental difference. That's something we could easily track, and that money right now is going to general government. The taxes, as has been mentioned, is already being allocated through the budget process, and so we would have to figure out how to track those taxes from all the different taxpayers. But the incremental rent, we can definitely define.
Okay. Thank you. So was that a...
That's a friendly amendment. If you accept it or not.
Yeah. I'm a second. Yes.
And then, Mayor, one, one other thing is that we're talking about 1.5 annual, 1.5 million dollars on an annual basis of... one-point-five million dollars on an annual basis of income coming to the city of Phoenix, right? And I apologize that.
That's correct.
We're not allowed to actually talk to, to all of my members on the council. This is the only way we can actually negotiate and talk. So, that's why I'm bringing it up at this moment. So, I apologize if this is all news because following open meeting laws, this is the only way we can communicate. So, I want to, one of the biggest things that I heard out there also was public safety. And the other thing is the homeless problems that we have, not just in the downtown area, but also within our, our neighborhoods. So, one of the concerns that I have is, how do we find that extra funding to make sure that our, our parks throughout the city of Phoenix, our downtown area, and also in the, in all parts of our city, have that extra revenue to, to help out with the homeless and public safety issues regarding homeless within, within our neighborhoods and within our parks? So, I would like to suggest another friendly amendment. And sorry that I wasn't able to talk to you all on this. But, um, that it goes towards that extra one-point-five. I'm not sure if the city manager, if this is possible, but to allocate it to homeless needs and public safety needs of our neighborhoods and, and parks.
Mayor Kinsman Okowski, so just to clarify, the twelve-point-eight million accounts for what's, what's happening now. And we can do an accounting for the council each year about how that, that base is applied to public safety efforts in our general fund. The money that the chief financial officer described is, and you just mentioned, is about one-and-a-half million dollars of new rent revenue because of how the agreement was negotiated. Our estimate is that, right away, when the building is completed, the rent is going to go up by a million and a half. As I understand it, you're asking, can that million and a half increment be specifically dedicated to homelessness?
And.
And?
And public safety within our neighborhoods.
Okay, so, neighborhood, public safety, homelessness issues, we, if that's what the council chooses to do, we can also do an accounting for that incremental revenue and bring it forward as part of a budget process and show it specifically as arena, new arena revenue dedicated to that issue that you mentioned. If that captures what you're asking.
That's exactly what I'm asking. And these are just the issues. When I went out to the five public meetings that residents were concerned about, it was about public safety, that we should be using this revenue to generate more monies for public safety, that we should use this revenue to help out with our homeless situation that we have in the city of Phoenix. And also that we're having some problems within our neighborhoods, securing our parks and, and open space, that if we can maybe even look at park rangers, maybe in the future, whatever needs there are throughout the whole city of Phoenix, not just in the downtown area. And that's why I brought this up.
So, Mayor Kinsman, just, so you're saying that the upside from the negotiated deal that increases revenue, which we estimated one-and-a-half million dollars a year, you would like us then to put that towards homeless, homelessness and public safety issues in our neighborhoods? So, we would do that as part of the budget process and demonstrate that to the council as part of your adoption of a budget.
Right.
Okay. If possible, may I just add, if at all possible, I'd like that amendment to be dedicated to NSD. Would that work?
Our, our, yes, our public, our public safety and homelessness services could include parks, neighborhood services, human services and police at a minimum.
And then, the one thing I do agree with, with Sal DeCecio also is, we should change the contract where we keep the naming rights of Phoenix and the Phoenix Suns. I'm not sure, Robert, if you're okay with that, that we have in the contract, that we, we. And, and for the record, I needed some clarification on some ledger issues that I wasn't able to get. And so, I actually called the Suns' office and they said, "Come on down. We'll open up our books. Any questions that you have?" So, probably, it was about a, about a two-hour conversation that we had.
Yeah.
And he brought his auditing reports and all that. And, and it was, it was quite eye-opening. So, now I understand this document a little bit better. So, I want to thank you for, for that, those couple hours.
Yeah, sure. So, Robert Sarver, managing partner, Phoenix Suns and Mercury in the Arena, Two-Town East Jefferson. In terms of the naming rights, I think that's totally appropriate. Not that we've had any idea of changing the name, but I think I do take proud in that this team is, the Mercury and the Suns are the only professional sports franchises that have the name Phoenix on them in the Valley. And I think if, if you guys are going to make that investment, that makes a lot of sense. And, you know, you and I talked and I said, "Yeah, that, that makes sense." So, I'm totally on board with that. In terms of putting a number on the community commitment, you know, this is something, is a lot of these people talked about that came up, that, that we do anyway. We don't do it because there's a number or contract. We do it because our twelve-hundred employees believe in it. And, and that's kind of who we are. So, I, I'm good with that. The Head Start's an easy one for me. My mom was a kindergarten teacher. She volunteered at Head Start. My sister volunteered at Head Start. And my godmother actually taught as a volunteer teacher for twenty years at Head Start in Tucson. So, that's an easy one for me. So, in terms of the amendments you have, those are all good. I think they're good for the community and we're totally on board if a few so vote for that.
Phoenix Mercury and Phoenix Suns. That's great.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
We need a clarification on your motion.
Yes, that, for it to be section two-point-one, not two-point-seven.
And all the additional, but, yes, with the additional amendments. Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Roll call.
Oh, just really quick.
Oh, sorry.
I'll be very quick again. Just, I do want to thank Robert Sarver and the team and everybody else in your organization. You've done a phenomenal job here in Arizona. Appreciate it. It's obvious with the team and the groups that you've brought up here, you've got tremendous level of support out there. One of the things too, is if you look at, you know, we have all been talked to by somebody. I mean, people like, and you had all these as volunteers, Andrew Cohen. I saw Steve Betts here somewhere. He volunteered his time to work with all of us and, there he is, hey, Steve. You had, let's see, I saw Mike Ebert here. I know, Mike, you've been out there talking to all of us. So, I, that shows you a lot of support that you have. I think you should be very proud of this because they are, this is a true reflection on the Suns. And Jordan Rose, I don't know where you're at over here, but, you know, the PR campaign, getting the message out there, you've done an amazing job. I mean, I'm just amazed that you've been able to pull together here. And you just did. I mean, it was just well-done, is what I can tell you. From my end of it, I don't support this agreement. I don't think it's in the right financial sense for the city of Phoenix. The city of Phoenix, regardless of what these numbers are telling you, we're looking at different financial numbers. I don't know, I just look at the direct. I don't look as much as on the indirect revenues. But from the direct side of it, we're going to be incurring a debt load of about thirteen-point-seven million dollars per year. So, I'd like to get what a final number is from this ad, maybe by tomorrow morning, what the additional police and all that for the homeless and all that's going to be in there, what that additional amount is. Because if you're really taking a look, I mean, this is from my analysis of this, we're going to be losing money on the, on the agreement, a revenue stream. And if you look at that, you're basically just realigning the general fund monies. I mean, you don't have two pots of monies from here. That all goes into and it all comes from the general fund at one point or another. It is what it is. So, at the end of the day, I'd just like to get an idea what that amount is going to be because, and I like the idea, and I want to thank Councilman Okowski for including public safety for every one of those individuals that are here wearing the blue uniform. Thank you. We are blessed as a city to have you here in our city. I do think that you deserve more pay for what you get, especially for what the fact of the matter is, we're short police officers. We're short over five-hundred officers. One of the positive things that's come out of this is I've been able to see a level of focus that I've not ever seen from the city in many, many years. So, congratulations for that level of focus for those of you that are here. I would hope that our next step is to focus on our streets and focus on our police and getting more officers on the streets. I would like to see the level of focus that we saw during this entire discussion also be put into a way where we're able to bring in those five-hundred additional officers, whether it's going out to some of these air force bases or military bases around the country and bringing them in. I know it's something that the plea group had been pushing for some time to have us do. And to fix our streets. I mean, we have got to do those other things too. We can walk and chew gum if we choose to do that. So, thank you, Mayor. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of you over there that are sitting there and congratulate, there's Jordan. Joe, raise your hand, the one with the hair there. You did a great job of being able to pull people together here today. I think, amazing. So, but thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Okowski?
Mayor, I just want to thank the individuals that went out to all the five public hearings. And we had an, an additional one for the business owners in downtown Phoenix, which we had about three-hundred individuals at that meeting. And it's really important to hear from you all. And the five meetings were well-attended. We heard from the community. And these were some of the concerns, the ones that I added into this was some of the concerns I heard out there from individuals that actually spoke or afterwards pulled me to the side and said, "We're concerned. We're concerned about public safety and if there's going to be funding in the future for public safety. And if we do hire those extra three-hundred officers, is there the funding for it?" So, that's one of the reasons why I asked for eighty percent of that funding to be secure in the future for police officers. The other thing that we heard out there over and over was just the homeless situation, that we have a great program in the city of Phoenix. I went to Los Angeles for the, for New Year's Eve, and if you see the homeless situation out there on the streets of downtown Los Angeles, you can't compare it to the city of Phoenix. I think we're doing a really great job. And matter of fact, it's not just the city of Phoenix, we're actually taking care of the homeless for the whole region. And I believe it's a regional issue. And I believe that we need to get our, our sister cities to partner up and to basically hack the program that we have here in Cass and every single city in Maricopa County. So, that's, the city of Phoenix isn't carrying the big burden alone. So, that's why I thought it was really important that when we go to these neighborhood meetings over and over, also on our light rail meetings, over and over, we're hearing the issue of, how can we help homeless individuals? You know, it's not, it's not against the law to be homeless, but how do we bring resources and we help these individuals get on the right path and help them find a house and a job and all that? So, I think those are the type of programs that we want to make sure that it's a win for those individuals that are in a hard place in their life, that we provide those resources to help them out. And at the same time, help out those neighborhoods too that are, are going through some issues with security and stuff. The one thing I didn't mention, and I'd like, in the future, if we can look into it, I would ask Denise Olson to really look into our sports fund and see if there is an extra five-million dollars, if possible, you could bring that back later. It's not a part of this motion. That we can, I do agree with what Sal talks about lowering our pension. If we can actually find that extra money to put into our pension to actually drop the, the, the public safety pension costs that we have right now. And that would be something really nice to see in the future, especially if that fund starts to increase. I think we're about seventeen, eighteen million a year. And if it gets up a little bit more, that we start looking at some ways to offset that public safety pension also.
Thank you.
Very much.
Councilwoman Stark?
I just want to thank everybody. And, and you're correct, Michael, we, we can't talk to each other. It's hard because we don't want to violate open meeting law. But I think this was, a lot of thought was put into it. I thank Michael for suggesting these additional meetings. I went to several myself. And you're right, they asked a lot of tough questions and it sounds like you addressed them. Thank you.
Councilman? Pastor, and then, did you want to make a comment?
Thank you. I actually just would like to thank Mayor Williams and the city manager, Ed Zucker, for their leadership. I have sat since two thousand fifteen and twenty-one executive sessions. These sessions were all about the Suns. I also like to thank former mayor Greg Stanton, who had the courage at that time to really bring it forward and knew that the dialogue had to start in two thousand fifteen in order for us to land. I would really liked to thank the women who had the courage and the leadership to start and move this conversation forward and for it to land the way it did. It is, it has been a push-pull-me struggle to get here. So, I just want to thank everybody.
Councilwoman Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a very difficult process for me. As you all know, I was appointed a few months ago. So, I had to catch up on a lot of information. And since that time, I've been doing my due diligence. And if you know me, I ask eight-hundred questions in different, different many ways. And I went and met with the Suns. They opened up their books. I was able to tour the arena and look at the different areas that needed renovation. And it's needed. And I just want to thank the Suns, everyone that attended the community meetings for being there. And I just look forward to more years with the Suns.
Thank you. Vice Mayor? Nothing? Okay. I want to thank staff. You did a remarkable job. Jason, you were out there, you and Maria, at every, every one of those meetings, and you did an outstanding job. I want to thank Mr. Sarver for continuing to put up with this and our continual questions and, and calls. And I really want to thank the council. To me, this was a matter of integrity. We made a contract and I felt very strongly that the city of Phoenix honors its contracts. And so, this has been part of the negotiation. But in the end, I think we've proven that we are an honorable city. I've had talks with some friends who told me this wasn't going to make us very much money. It was not a good deal, and I agree with them. But I learned a long time ago, not everything's about money. This is more than that. This is our community. This is our asset. This is our excitement. This is our pride. And this is our recruitment tool. You can go down the list of the benefits that the arena provides to us. So, I want to thank each and every one of you up here, whether you're voting yes or no, for participating and putting up with this because it has been a challenge. And it seems like it's been a long progress. So, I want to thank Mr. Okowski, Ms. Rivera, Pastor, Stark, and Mendoza. Thank you very much. And Jim, just for being here, and Sal for your participation.
Mayor?
I'm in the eighties. You don't have to give me a participation ribbon. I don't need it. That's for like millennials. I'm Gen X.
Roll call. DeCecio? Givara?
Mayor, I'd like to explain my vote, if that's okay?
Okay.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank city staff really in doing your due diligence and making so much, putting forth so much effort to make sure our residents understood the deal. Your efforts across the city really led people to understand the numbers, what this was really about. And I know that it definitely created for positive discussions with my own constituents. As people know, about a month and a half ago, I wasn't supportive of this deal. At the time, I said that I'd rather see investment, rather than seeing investment in an arena, I'd like to see investments in our residents, in our, in early childhood education, and in West Phoenix. A couple of weeks ago, along with my fellow council members, I learned that due to budgetary reasons, the city would have to cut the number of spots available in Head Start preschool programs. This means that as many as four-hundred-and-fifty working families will lose access to high-quality, no-cost preschool for their children. And I thought back to the investments I wanted to see. And I asked myself, why can we have both? Why can't we invest in city infrastructures, city-owned infrastructure and also invest in our residents? And so, I sat back down with the Suns to try to find a way to really make it happen. The motion on the table will prevent thousands of working families in Phoenix from having to worry about losing access to preschool for their children. In District Five, this, this preschool program exists in Washington Elementary School District, Cartwright School District, Alhambra School District, and Pendergast. District Five has twenty-five percent of all Head Start program slots in Phoenix. Only one district benefits from Head Start preschool programs and more so than ours, and that's District Seven, represented by my council, by my fellow colleague, Councilman Okowski. It will also bring an additional seven-point-five million dollar investment into our communities this year. An investment that will be used in our schools, our parks, our programs for children, and more. The deal isn't perfect, but I'm happy to have found a deal that invests in education, our community, and city infrastructure. A few will invariably write some choice words about me for having changed my mind, and that's okay. As public officials, as people, we shouldn't be afraid to change our mind or maybe admit that initially we may have gotten it wrong. My concern will always be in acting in the best interests of my constituents and our city. I know who isn't disappointed today, though. The thousands of families who know they will not lose access to preschool for their children. The thousands of employees. for their children, the thousands of employees, and hundreds of local businesses that directly support the arena, and the countless Venetians who will benefit from new community investment in our schools, our parks, and programs for, for our children. And with that, I am a yes. Thank you.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
I explained my vote. Thank you. I'm going to be a no on this. I, I just don't think this is the proper role of government, and some will probably criticize me as being too conservative or too ideological, and I accept that, and I understand why. I in no way criticize my colleagues who are voting for this, to Councilman Williams' point. I understand that this is a city-owned building, and that this is a high-profile anchor tenant that means a lot to the community. If I didn't understand it, I would certainly understand it after today's meeting, but I, I did understand that before. I just simply didn't feel, you know, as an elected official, I was obligated to ratify a decision, which with, I, I would have disagreed with, had I been here at the time, you know, that was made in 1989 when I was in college in another state. So, this was something I felt strongly about. When Mayor Stanton made his announcement at his State of the City speech, I think it was three years ago, I immediately told the Suns, I would not be able to be there for them on this vote, and they have been nothing but gracious ever since, and I appreciate that more than I can say. To that end, I do have one person to thank, which is strange and awkward, since I'm voting no, but I'm going to do it anyway. I want to say thank you to former councilwoman Maria Byer, who's here in the audience, who works for the Suns. It was her bad lot in life to deal with me for three years, so I'm sure she is going to treat this memory like a bad marriage or something, and she'll be like, "Oh, my gosh, I never want to see that guy again," and we probably never will speak again. But I will say this, if she has any sense, anyway, but I do appreciate that the Suns continue to invest in District 2. I, to my happy surprise and shock, frankly, they invited me to several of their charitable activities. I declined, as she knows, a couple of the invitations, because I just thought, you know, it's awkward, and here I am, sort of freeloading, or however you want to put it. And I know, in my heart of hearts, I would not have been so gracious had the roles been reversed. So, I thank you for that, Maria, and I thank you for the way you guys have handled this, even though I, I may philosophically disagree with the end result, I, I can see it from the other side. And congratulations, Mayor, on your victory today. Thank you.
My vote is yes, and I want to thank everyone who participated, whether it was one of the community meetings, it was negotiations, or it was advice. I truly appreciate it. Thank you. Six-two, pass. Thank you all on this council.